Let's call this meeting to order. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Michael Sharp, front and center, please.
This is a contract with Endot. If you remember back in 2023, they closed the bridge there west of Centerville on 40. So there was a detour, and our detour route took Mineral Springs and College Corner. They didn't open the bridge until December of '23, I think, right before Christmas. And then I sent them, so I've been working on this since April, arguing with Endot on our detour route as far as doing the repairs and so forth. So I finally got it. We got what we're asking for. This is the contract, so we can do the patch paving on that detour route.
So not to exceed $41,758.50? Okay.
It probably will after we ran it. I think that was like 582 tons is what I originally turned in. When we marked it here a little bit before I ran through the route with them here a month or so ago, it was like 602 tons. But that's to be expected. The 582 was way back in the spring when we looked at it.
Okay.
Normal wear and tear.
I have about 600 ton or something, but they'll repay, reimburse for the 582.
Has Ron seen this?
I sent him an email.
Ron, have you seen this contract?
There was a lot of truck traffic up there. Stuff.
Right, right. And then it ended up splitting. There was truck traffic, and a lot of cars went the Colvin Route. Most of the truck traffic stayed on the northern part and went on the southern route.
Okay, we're good with it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Motion carries. So this is signed by all three commissioners. Have you got anything else for us, Mike?
The only other thing, Brad, you talked to me about the welcome sign. I sent some guys out there because I hadn't seen it, but they said there wasn't anything there because we've been mowing it and taking care of it. I wonder if it's the one on 70? There's one at the end of.
The message I got was 40.
Okay.
Cambridge, so, and I hadn't personally seen it.
They did weed eat out there, but they said there was not enough for a while to go out there.
I wonder if somebody got to it, didn't they?
So I know we mow it like every other week or something like that. All summer we've been mowing around that sign and so forth. There may have been some weeds that grew up, but they said it wasn't.
Said the county sign on 40.
Okay.
The side of the county is starting to get some weeds.
I went ahead and checked the one out there on Cambridge Road that's on 70, but a lot of that is kind of on the 70 right of way, where it may obstruct it a little bit, but out in front of our sign part, it's not too bad a shape.
I appreciate you checking on it.
Yeah, the one on 70 isn't great, but it's just a matter of time till.
More on 70, and I don't really put the guys out in the ditch on 70.
Yeah, it wasn't too bad if they burned it up. You can see it.
That's all I am.
Okay, we'll get that sign for you and get it right back to you. No one here from the Health Department yet, so let's move on to Ron Cross.
Think you wanted a final draft of the Dr. Kostin.
Yes.
I've got.
And we, Mary Ann and I approved that last week, so we just needed a copy to get signed with the final.
I've got three originals, one for each party.
Okay. Thank you. And that's just my signature. What else have you got?
Taking action on, I'm working on and have probably done half or more than half of our memorandum of understanding, emerandums of understanding with the grant recipients, loan recipients of the county's Main Street Revitalization Program Grant Program. And I probably should have the list of those done later today or sometime tomorrow.
Great.
To get them to Beth and Steve, and then you guys are going to be meeting, I think, at least with.
Tomorrow.
More like a status conference with the folks, where they are.
Yes, and we're going to provide them with a copy of that template that you gave us, so that they can have a chance to look it over. Got your copies done, we'll send that to the proceedurs and bring it back to the mission.
And again, you were gone, and I did not get any input on the template. I mean, I assume if you looked at it, you know, I don't really care much about the MOU, but I do want to make sure that the deed restriction is done in proper.
We can share that too, right?
Yeah, most definitely, because they need to understand that there's property that we'll have to lean on, and I don't mean they're personally liable for it, if the property's liable, if in fact there's an impermissible transfer during the five-year forgiveness period.
Okay.
But we try to define what is an impermissible transfer, or what is not, so if it's a death in the family, or, you know, that type of thing.
All right. Anything else?
No.
I just want to close the loop on the claim that WellCare filed for the settlement from a couple of deposits that came to our account from a seven-year-old settlement that dispute back in 2017.
Well, yeah, their dispute must have been. We didn't know anything about it because we were parties to dispute.
Yeah, you saw the detailed summary of the settlement from 2017 that was just apparently settled this summer. What triggered this is that Nancy Funk, the treasurer, noticed a couple of inexplicable deposits totaling $64,000. And so upon examination, these were deposits as a result of that seven-year-old dispute from the healthcare clinic. And of course, WellCare would like to have that, those settlement funds deposited, which, you know, triggered me to ask Bobby to dig out the severing agreement with the clinic, now WellCare, and the county to see if there was actually anything that might impede us just flowing that deposit directly back to WellCare. And there may be some question as to whether or not everything has settled completely from a few years ago. I know there was some question about properly, proper closure of all matters.
And reporting. There was some of the reports that weren't completed, and it was still under the county's EIN number. And so I think the county ended up paying some money back to the federal government.
I think we had money in the account, but it didn't cover the entire claim of the federal government, and I'm thinking, golly.
It's been a few years.
$45,000.
Yeah.
We paid.
That's kind of what I'm thinking in that ballpark, so I guess I would suggest that it's been since 2017.
Yeah.
Hold off on paying this claim until we.
Because I think one of the other issues, and I think I remember that they did it because I suggested that they needed to do it, but I think you got to look at the, the actual provider at the time was Wayne County Community.
Community or Wayne County, Wayne County Health Center.
Wayne County Health Center, yeah.
Wayne County Community Health Center, I believe it was.
Yeah, and now welfare is claiming rights derivative of them, and I do believe they took an assignment of their assets. The question is whether they took an assignment of their liabilities.
Exactly.
And whether we can set it off, the amounts that we can go back and ascertain. We paid because they did not properly report their activities to, I think, Medicare Administrative Organization out of Wisconsin, WEB, whatever it's called.
So we may well end up paying them back that whole amount, but I don't, I think we ought to investigate it a little further.
Examine whether all liabilities have been completely settled. Is that something we would have the ability to do in a reasonable period of time?
It's taken them seven years to settle it. I can't imagine we're going to get much of very effective communication as to the nuances of the settlement, but I mean, I don't, if it's settled, it's settled. The question is the money's been paid pursuant to the settlement. It's been deposited because it was our federal ID number with.
Exactly.
Auditor. And I do know that during the initial period of the separation, monies coming in as part of Medicare reimbursements were in fact paid over to.
To WellCare.
Healthcare Center and now WellCare. So my guess is it'll be in order, but I think the issue of set off is a bit intriguing that I'd like to take a look at because, hey, these are the first monies, maybe not that have come in, but the first ones that we were aware of that came in before they got paid directly.
Exactly. So I would suggest that we strike that from, from the claims for this road.
Okay, that's on the third to the last page of the claim settlement you all received from Linda on Friday. Just because I know they are ACH-ing this, would you mind if we dealt with that one claim now and we could run that over to the auditor to stop that?
What we're writing here is that in the form of a motion.
I move that we approve regular claims dated September 4th with the exception of.
There are two lines on there. Two line items that total that.
It's one line item on page nine of the summary, fund number 9131, headlined Health Center. Item number 004704, the payee, WellCare, in the amount of $64,312.20. I will ask the auditor's office to hold that payment for further investigation.
Yeah, so your, your motion is to approve everything else.
Except that one.
Including the payout to the contractual employee.
I couldn't find that in here. It may be, it may be. It wasn't under regular claims. It must be a special claim that I just got copied, so.
It could be.
I had three other claims that I had to pull that have all been resolved, but this was the only one I couldn't get resolved.
Can I take a look at that? I don't have it printed out.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was towards the end.
Oh, did you find it?
I don't know yet.
Yeah, I hung up on four and.
Yeah, here it is.
Oh, towards the end?
Yeah, under, under contractual professional.
Oh.
Is that? Right there.
Oh, right there. Upper case.
And there's two of them there.
Okay, I amend my motion to say we, we hold up for further examination on page 10, clinical services, contractual professional.
Before we add that, let me ask Ron to take a quick look at that.
Sure.
He may have advice that we go ahead and pay that out, but that's. These two here. Which I think is the, is the payout for the comp time.
With maintenance and repair?
No, 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 no.
What am I looking at?
That was for the seven and a quarter hour dinner.
I don't understand how that could be the correct line item.
It hurts.
I'd like to double check the amounts because I don't.
Dr. Ryder's here.
So let's.
You want to ask Dr. Ryder?
I don't know that Dr. Ryder would know, but do you want to, you want to take a look at these claims? Give us your feedback? Let me take a look.
Yeah, the Health Department is always under the microscope, it seems.
So these are two payouts, and one of them is listed under, under contractual, but the other one is listed under equipment, maintenance, and repair.
I have no idea about this one. I know on the contractual, the problem came up that he was allowed to take comp time instead of pay, and then it was decided that we would get straight hours.
Okay. So that, so your board is recommending that we pay that one out?
The comp time one. So there was, I think there was one claim that we met and we thought that shouldn't be approved, and I think that where Harvey wouldn't have been approved by the supervisor when he asked for like eight hours.
For a dinner after hours.
Right, and we.
So they're asking to pay that now?
And we said no. I mean.
And that's why we pulled that portion of his one claim.
Right, so I don't know if that's in there. The board approved, the situation was that he was allowed to take comp time when he shouldn't have, he should have been paid. So to settle everything and bring everything back to a new and start, kind of start over, we elected to say that we owed him that pay.
I think we did. I think it's just a matter of verifying the amount with Dan.
Right.
Okay, so we'll withhold payment for the moment, we'll verify the numbers, and then we'll, if it's appropriate.
But the board approved paying him comp time, but then later there came up some questions about what he had asked to be paid before.
We withheld that portion of that claim because we were told that the Health Department authorities questioned the bill. They said it wasn't billable hours, that it wasn't an authorized eight hours.
And so one of them being listed under equipment, maintenance, and repair, I think we need to get clarification on that as well.
Unless that goes through the next claim, I don't know the formatting of it.
So what are we withholding?
I can't remember what the amount was.
It was seven and a quarter hours of time.
Yeah, so.
I just want to withhold the time.
You see, medical dental supplies goes to that one. This is contractual professional, and then this one, to that same payee, is listed under equipment, maintenance, and repair in that amount, which doesn't make sense to me.
Why would he be paying for that and get reimbursed?
I don't understand why. That's why I suggest we take.
We withhold these two.
Correct, along with the, the other one that we already talked about for WellCare.
So I think we need to run this over to the auditor's office.
Okay.
So my motion is that we withhold three claims, two under clinical services, 340B on page 10 of your summary report, $1,113.75 and $1,600. Was the amount that the auditor said he was going to pay. That amount is not here.
It's a different number.
That was the number I was looking for, which is why.
It's not there, yeah. So you were looking for the number.
I was looking for 1,600.
Yeah.
The auditor is attempting to withhold funds against my advice, but it's okay.
So let's, let's go ahead with your motion and get clarity.
Where's the 1,600 and, yeah.
And what are we paying there?
Right, and we can, we don't, we can always do it next week.
Correct.
Right, so withhold three claims, that one and the one on page nine to WellCare, as previously stated.
Yep.
For 6400.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
And here's the auditor now, so you can.
Ah, can I give this to you to run back? We are withholding payment of three questionable claims that needs more investigation.
Who are they?
All Health Department. Unfortunately, the summary we got on Friday does not match up page-wise.
Can I have them?
I've got to mark it for you, so I can't find it. See, this was 11 pages. This 11 pages, why doesn't it match up? I think $64,000 would jump off the page. It's been moved around. Interestingly, what we get on Friday doesn't.
Well, there was an email, and I'm reading the email now. It says that claim was that Mark wanted to pay the balance of the 1,600.
Oh, okay.
Which was $1,113.75.
Oh, that was the balance? Okay, that was the seven and a quarter hours.
Right.
I can answer that question without taking the claim. That's, name's Wolf, he works in the.
Right.
Health Department. You pulled out a claim, not for me not to pay.
At the direction that wasn't authorized by the Health Department.
Which was 271375.
Right, I paid 1,600 of that claim.
Okay, 16 was paid, okay.
Then that left a balance of whatever that.
$1,113.75.
Whatever that claim shows is the balance, and I'm presenting that to you to allow me to pay that, the balance on that claim that we withheld.
And we withheld it because the Health Department told it it wasn't authorized to be paid, it wasn't authorized.
Right, so we withheld it, but we never went back and corrected that claim.
Because it was never authorized by the Health Department.
Right, so I'm presenting it to you to pay the balance of that claim.
That was never authorized, and we can't, we can't sign off on it because we never had authorization.
Okay.
From his supervisors or the board or anybody.
Oh, I contacted Mr. Burke about it also. I sent him an email saying, telling him what I was, no, I didn't send an email. I took the information down to him, showed him what I was going to do. I never got a request back that said, don't do it.
I think he was, he probably felt he needed more conversation, more investigation, and that's what we're seeing, we're never, not, never going to pay it, we just need more further information.
That's fine.
We're just withholding it for more information, just as we are the $2,827.50 payable to Mr. Wolf for equipment, maintenance, and repair. That, I can't imagine him being reimbursed for equipment, maintenance, and repair.
We're back to the issue of his contract and what I'm responsible to pay for. And if that is not in his contract, then it shouldn't be paid. I did receive a claim from the Health Department, signed by Mr. Burke, to pay it.
For that amount.
Yes, and I'm saying.
Can we get a copy of the claim?
Yeah.
To review? Okay.
We just want to hold it up today. We, you know, it's not like we're refusing to ever pay it. We just need further information, and we know these ACHs are about to go out, so we just want to hold them up right now. And then the third one is payment to WellCare for $64,000, all on the same page. So I'll give you this.
Well, here I get it.
And we want to withhold payment on that one until we can do some further investigation as well. I believe we did. Did we vote?
Did we vote on it?
Did we take the vote? Yes, we did.
Okay.
Do we withhold it?
Correct.
Those three, we just don't want the ACHs to go out.
Those three that are circled are.
And it's probably on the verge of going out.
Everything else on there is approved, except for those three claims.
I want to back up to my reasoning a little bit. I don't want to make the decision on this, these two claims from Mr. Wolf, because it puts me in direct conflict as of what should be paid.
And we're not asking you to, we made the decision.
That's why you got the claim.
Exactly. And so, but we want to see the claim to have that additional information, and we haven't done that yet.
Yeah, another one, the $64,000.
We got the claim for that.
We've got all that from Linda.
We still have questions, but we don't have the other two.
More information would you want from me? Because I'm just going to get my information from Linda.
We want the claims for those other two payments, and, and Ron is going to work with us to investigate the payment for the $64,000.
Linda gave us everything we need on WellCare's claim, but we didn't get it for the Wolf claim.
All right. Thank you. Ron, what else have you got? Nothing? All right. Dr. Ryder? Come on up. So I understand at your meeting yesterday, you took a vote on hiring a new director?
Well, we completed the process of reviewing the applicants and doing the interviews, and we felt that Dan Burke was the most qualified to be the new director, so we recommend that he be appointed Director of the Health Department.
And so, Ron, we need to, we need to officially take.
Yeah, and I was confused because something this morning, and counsel referred to it as an interim director.
I think that was in the past.
That was, that was a couple of weeks ago.
Prior adjustment for.
They adjusted his peg.
Retroactive to July.
Okay.
When he was the interim. If we approve this today.
It's not interim.
Kim, when does his, when would his position start immediately, or?
I think we had effective September the 9th.
September the 9th, because that's the start of the next pay period?
September 8th.
I move that we approve Dan Burke as the director.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There are really two motions, so everybody is in favor. Is there any further discussion? I would just say that I think Dan has done a great job as the interim, and I think he'll do a great job as the director.
I would agree with that statement. Looking forward to working with him.
And I hope you'll express how much we appreciate him taking over the reins of a runaway team.
It was a difficult time, and he stepped up and really has done a great job, and so have you, Paul. Without any further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Burke is our new director of the Wayne County Health Department. Please congratulate him for us, Paul. Thank you for coming in. All right, I think we're ready for Mr. Higginbotham.
All right, you heard the presentation this morning, just a few more details, kind of like Harvey's rest of the story.
The rest of the story, all right.
So the NX generator, we're leaning on our design engineer to come up with a solution on the pad that was core, the synthetic concrete pad. We don't believe that it was core according to the specifications, nor does DLZ, so we're waiting for the instructions from DLZ to the contractor as to how that will be remedied.
All right.
And we are withholding payment. We didn't receive a payout from the contractor, and we're withholding payment on that until this is resolved. And the chamber technology, it worked better this morning. I think there's still a few things to tweak, but I think for the most part, we've got the, everything's in place as it should be. I think we go ahead and start cleaning up the room in there to get some of the extra pieces of furniture that's stored elsewhere while they were working in there. We're exploring options for the obsolete. obsolete lighting system. Remember that company that made the lighting system has gone completely out of business. And there's no, no parts being made by anyone. There are a few companies that we found that are making some retrofit parts, but.
So this was their very last sale while they were in business, huh?
I don't think it was one of their last. It was probably one of the last. It's about the time that we purchased this. It's about, and they, I guess their bankruptcy was very abrupt. And no one bought the asset, no one bought the assets to it. And there it lies.
You mean the manufacturer?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the parts, any parts that was on the shelf, that's it. And so some of the like, you see that light switch missing there. We can't buy that light switch anyplace. It's a unique light switch to this controller.
Can we buy a fake one that fits that hole?
Maybe. Or white duct tape.
adhesive tape or something.
White duct tape.
That'd be great. Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then the elevator study, again, that according to the timeline, that we expect that sometime next week. However, we did get an email from LWC this morning. They want to come back and visit tomorrow to see the, they wanna relook at the.
Shaft.
Bacon shaft. I wanted the air elevators in. So we set that up. And then the Coleman roof and the ceiling, we had our pre-bid this morning. We had three contractors that appeared for the roof portion of it. And remember, that's a, that's a unique system, so to speak. In other words, you have to have me certified to be able to put that system on. So these, there were no local roofers that were in attendance. We did have six contractors interested in the interior, the ceiling and lighting. And you should get those bits then next week.
Okay.
And then the expo hall HVAC train has been there and they've certified the installation. The only thing now is left is the, the, it's, the only thing that is left is the insulation on the outside ductwork. And I talked to the installer this morning. That should be done Friday. And then PersaPanco will then paint it.
Paint.
And that'll be done. They're also gonna start on the highway.
Okay. PersaPanco will. Good.
The fairgrounds horsebound roof, that is finished. It is just a bid under budget. You heard my explanation to council this morning. This is something that we talked about all along. About, we didn't spend on this portion. We'll go to the Coleman roof. But you'll still need some extra money down through the project.
Okay.
And you should start seeing some drawings coming through hopefully next week or the week after for the. And remember, that's on a pretty good schedule to get that under contract before the end of the year.
We need to keep moving it forward though like that.
And I'll keep on LWC to keep that moving because we do need to get that under contract.
Okay.
And then we will have the security meeting next week to talk about ox cart lock system.
Okay. And I think we've also talked off and on about replacement of the X-ray equipment. So that should be part of that discussion as well. Okay.
And then you did hear my say, it was one of the larger Autumn Oaks.
Any feedback at this point?
I talked to, I talked to our staff out there to see if they experienced any issues. Had a few likable issues, not near as many as we had during the fair. But because we fixed, you know, some stuff during the fair. So during that real hot week, we did blow some breakers, but nothing like it was during the fair. Everything else was like.
I take it Haley has some, she does her exit interviews or exit. She'll give a report.
She does that. Yeah.
Do we know anybody who picked up a coonhound at the event?
I just want to report what happened when I greeted the Autumn Oaks crowd. It was a packed crowd in Coleman. I mean, before I've done this at First Bank Expo Center. But I kind of enumerated the improvements we've made to the fairgrounds and the buildings and the all. And this crowd was so receptive that they actually broke out into applause. I mean, I felt kinda bad because Mayor Olter actually had a proclamation offering and everything. And I was just kind of. No, no applause. But I went through all the improvements you've worked so hard on. Yay! So it was really wonderful. But I mean, they were, they were very, very welcoming. And, but I've never seen them quite so receptive and excited about all the improvements. Of course, my message was, we so appreciate the thirty-five years you've been coming. We want to greet you back for thirty-five and many more years to come. Thirty-five years consecutive that they've been coming. So believe me, it has had an impact on the tourism economy of Wayne County.
Sure.
We're about to land another big one for next year.
Great.
Give you details, but we're close.
Yes, the improvements will have an ROI that we'll feel. I just knew that would.
Look at you. We're planning on doing a joint between you and council, a presentation as we did in the last year about income and show you about what our income of WellCare's see that, that return investment. And it looks pretty decent.
So do all the chairs have dog hair all over them?
They actually use the old.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Well, you know, the chairs weren't there for the coon hunters and the dogs and all. You had the nice bleachers and.
They had bleachers.
Yeah, bleachers.
That's probably a good idea.
There were a lot of dogs in Coleman, but I just want to thank you for that. And I, I wanted you to know and let, let the crew down at the fairgrounds know just how grateful they expressed gratitude for all the improvements. And I told them there were even more to come. So.
Good deal.
That's all I have. Yeah.
That's all you have.
I have a little tiny thing.
Okay. Go right ahead.
This is maybe more than inquiry than anything. You know, I really feel that even though much of the landscaping has been removed for security purposes, there are those four pots, the ballards in front of the courthouse that used to have pretty flowers that, you know, kind of changed out over the seasons. But I noticed they've kind of gone from flowers to weeds in recent times. I'm wondering.
You call weeds, I call flowers.
Really? Dandelions?
I love dandelions.
Do you? Okay.
I'm just wondering if there are any plans to maybe have an autumnal flavor to that because I've kind of looked at them and thought, you know, ten little mum plants for fall.
Put anything in them.
Cause they're gonna have to move, right?
Yeah, but that didn't mean we did nothing on the rest of the grounds. But those are so prominent and people see them so up close and personal.
At the very least, I think we could not, we could pull the weeds.
Yeah. I, you know, I was tempted to go get my roundup and, and I have a shooting.
You want to hurt my feelings with that. We'll do, we'll do that.
I mean, I guess for a hundred and sixty dollars, you could get ten mums in each of the pots. And if you, if we've got a hundred and sixty dollars left, plus a little mulch somewhere. Because people, I mean, some of that other beautiful landscaping, people don't see so up close. But, you know, that's our, that's our smile. And the entrance to our, the face of Wayne County.
All right. You should work on that, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you.
What else do you have? Do you have the rest of the claims and?
Are we all the way through?
Yeah. Yeah.
Strangely enough, the, the Friday summary I got did not have that other David Wolf claim on. So.
So it was added?
Yeah. So I didn't, anyway, I, I love getting that on Friday. So I have something to do on the weekend.
There you go. Keeps you out of trouble.
Move for approval following claims. A claim that did not get paid. It was an oversight from last week from the auditor's office to the Health Maintenance Fund. Trachul Professional Total. You want to look at that one? We may have to withhold. Richmond Police Department?
Oh, that's probably for the, that's the safety seat program.
Yeah, exactly. The car seats, remember that?
Oh, that's an Arva thing?
Health Department. No, it's the Health Department. They're gonna use some of the HealthFirst Indiana funds.
HealthFirst. Okay.
To help fund a car seat.
It's just something I hadn't seen. Yeah, HealthFirst has, gonna have a lot of new programs.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay. This must be a HealthFirst.
It is.
To the Richmond Police Department. Move that for approval. Regular payroll dated September sixth. Federal payroll and perf withholding dated September sixth. Garnishments and Dunn Flex withholding dated September sixth. Boston Mutual and payroll declarations dated August twenty-ninth. And state and local taxes dated August twenty-ninth.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve those claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Also move for approval of Commissioner Minutes dated August twenty-eighth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last week's meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. All right. Brad, do you have anything? I don't think so. Bobby?
Yes. This morning I got a request for a hotel increase from the Child Support Division from one-thirty to one-thirty-nine a night for November sixth of the eighth at French Lick Resort.
We have a motion to approve that. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the increase in motel rates. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Anything else?
That's all I have.
I recommend that sometime in September, we go over the holiday schedule for 2025 because it's, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions with our holidays fall.
Okay. Okay.
We're gonna have to probably give something up or add another holiday. And we'll probably have to devote more than one discussion.
Okay. We can start that conversation. Anything else?
I'm wondering if you've had a chance to look at the strategy for animal.
I don't know about Brad because he was out of town. But I'm, I'm gonna put together, I'm gonna redraft with my ideas, just a few changes in language and so on. So.
And I have a little input from Animal Care Alliance. And just some tweaks.
Okay.
But overall, are we, you know, we, I think we need to agree on the overall objectives.
Sure. So again, we'll, we'll continue working on that. And in the next couple of weeks, we'll bring it up for discussion.
Yeah. Want to keep it on the radar.
Yep. Absolutely.
One quick, one quick point. I sent out, actually, I got an inquiry from Barry Ritter wanting to know how our local business preference statute or ordinance works. And I sent it.
The bi-local thing?
Bi-local. I sent you all the copy. But I had a chance to work its way through it. At, at the end of the day, I, I guess I have to say that I think we were well intentioned, but I don't think it works at all. I mean, most people don't even know about it. They don't even claim it. I think since Bob Rosa passed, we haven't had a real advocate for bi-local.
It was the Bob Rosa plan.
You don't need to make a decision, but take a look at that because I can tell you it almost never gets claimed. And all we did is create a, as a bi-ordinance, a, under home rule, a modification in the statutory scheme that went from requiring that the applicability of bi-local be included in the solicitation of bids, proposals, quotes, whatever, to reversing it and saying ours would presumptively be a part of any such solicitation, RFP, whatever, request for quotes, unless the commissioners at the time they authorized the solicitation expressly would determine not to do that, which would normally be in, I think, large ticket, larger ticket items like trucks and what have you. But so many of Mike's purchases are basically, you know, used and.
Right.
Opportunities. And, and I, I can't recall many, if any, claiming it right out of the chute. And part of our ordinance says that it has to be claimed, even though it's presumptively part of the invitation for bids. So take a look at it. I'm not sure it's accomplishing any purpose except being out there, hanging out there.
Okay.
Obviously a potential source for disagreement and litigation, given facts it's actually presented itself.
Now, it has come into play for sheriff's vehicles in addition to. It's come into play a few years ago.
It has from time to time. Yes, I, I would agree. And, and mostly on vehicles, as I recall.
Vehicles.
Correct.
Even then, I wonder if it was claimed or if it was used as a basis for determination to award the bid to the local bidder. I, I think we waived the, we may have done that, but I bet you we did a waiving the requirement that it be claimed. And that's a little slippery slope also. So, well, take a look at it and give it some thought. There's nothing you need to decide right away.
I have another question for you, Ron. As, as we're looking at redrafting a interlocal agreement between Wayne County and Union County on, for WUR.
That might be.
So we meet again next week is why it has come up. And I'm, I'm looking online for the statutes that, that apply, and they have changed. So can you do a review for me and send me the pertinent statutes? And I want to make sure that number one, we're actually, we have a mission for WUR that aligns with statute. And number two, that any kind of statutory requirements for makeup of the, of the board and those kind of things fall in line with what we want to do, you know, because we still have the option of, Wayne County going its own way as opposed to continuing to work with Union County. And if, if it comes out that it doesn't work for us, then we may need to look at that again as a possibility.
I think I am aware. I don't know that there've been any recent changes. I'll take a look.
But since, you know, I looked up, looked up the code site from.
The original Act that was in the agreement has been repealed, but it's been recertified in a.
Yes.
Statute pretty much as originally existed.
Okay. Well, I'll get that code site. I would like to look at that in its updated version. Thank you. Anything else? Is that everything to sign?
Oh, wait, no.
Oh, is that the, the, at the hotel increase?
Hundred and thirty-nine dollars at French Lick Resort. That's not too bad. And we probably ought to take a look at the per diem. Have we, or have we put that bid?
Well, it's, it's really a council decision. Has been in the past.
It's a policy decision that we recommend to them, I think.
Which is fine.
We don't get that many, what, one or two a month?
Yeah.
Until it really steps up. I think it dropped down right after COVID. Everybody was trying to make up their COVID losses.
I think so too. We're trying to get people not to stay there because they didn't have any staff. Okay. If there is nothing else, we will adjourn. Thank you.